You're joining us live from City Hall here in the great city of South Wilton. Introducing Mayor and Council. Mayor Khalid. Councilwoman Dr. Catherine Rau, District One. Councilwoman Carmelita Gomes, District Two. Councilwoman Helen Zenobia Willis, District Three. Councilman J.C. Sebastian, District Four. Councilwoman Kiyosha B. Bell, District Five. Councilwoman Natasha Williams Brown, District Six. Mayor Pro Tim Linda Becker Pritchett, District Seven. Interim City Attorney Sarah Kelly. City Clerk Corey Adams. City Manager Sharon D. Subedon. Thank you for joining the City of South Wilton Council Meeting, a city on the rise.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our public hearing for our FY 2026 Budget Number One. We'll be doing another one of these this evening at our four o'clock, seven o'clock meetings. Mr. Clerk, please sound the roll.
It's a roll call for this morning's public hearing. The Honorable Catherine F. Rau, District One.
Present.
The Honorable Carmelita Gomes, District Two.
Present.
The Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three.
Present.
The Honorable J.C. Sebastian, District Four.
Present.
The Honorable Kiyosha B. Bell is en route. And the Honorable Natasha Williams Brown, District Six, will be absent. The Honorable Linda B. Pritchett, District Seven.
Here.
And the Honorable Mayor Khalid.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
All right, please sound the first item.
First item is the FY 2026 Budget Presentation. Presented by Sharon D. Subedon, our City Manager, and Althea Philard Bradley, Chief Financial Officer.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, citizens, anybody who's tuning in. This is our first public hearing of our 26th budget. We will go through the budget presentation as we did last time, but we will abbreviate it so that we can leave plenty of opportunity for a public comment. We, I always say, this is the most important policy decision that you will make as a council for, in a year. Although this year you have some other really important policy decisions that you will make. The budget provides a 12-month roadmap for your staff to follow, gives us our guiding policies, gives us our direction, and helps us to continue to move the city forward. Theme around this budget, which is a continuation on from the state of the city, that today's choices shape tomorrow's impact. And I actually like to say that yesterday's choices have impacted us today in a very, very good way. So the choices that you have made have put us in a very good financial position, and this is more of a reminder that those choices that you make today are going to be very significant tomorrow. This base budget includes no change in the military rate, expenditures for continuing operation, annualization of contracts with the CPI. In the base budget, we included what we were told was going to be an increase in our health insurance. I have very good news to report, that we believe that we will not have to sustain such a large increase in our health insurance. Clap loud, Audrey, clap loud, clap loud. Because this would impact employees, and so we met with our new broker yesterday. I think we have some very good news to report. We don't have all the numbers yet, but I am very optimistic that we're going to be moving in a direction that does not force us into a large increase around health insurance. In this budget, we incorporated a merit increase on the anniversary date after employees get their performance evaluation. And the key initiatives of our impact-driven budget are around the goals that you outlined in our strategic plan, which was adopted earlier this year. As it stands now, the City Manager's proposed budget is for $431 million. It incorporates $96 million in debt service, in debt proceeds for our big capital projects, city, the police headquarters, and the fire headquarters and training facility. Our general fund is standing at $196 million, our capital funds $191, and other funds at $43. Our budget is balanced as required by state law and required by your ordinances as with every city and county in the state of Georgia. Here are some of our initiatives, and you'll see more information around this. I was asked for detail on our capital project, so there's a handout that I just sent around demonstrating all of the costs associated with our capital projects. Some of those are carryovers from the current year, some of those are first-year expenditures. For example, first-year expenditures on municipal court build-out to include design and site development, and our first-year expenditures expected on Cedar Grove Community Center, as an example. We've talked about these already. We are incorporating 3% COLA for our fire department. We are currently in negotiations with them around wages. That is subject to ratification, finalization, and could change. Around our new initiatives, we recognize the importance of meeting our community where we are. And so, CDBG will fund our park sensory playground equipment out of our capital. We're funding Miracle League Field for our differently-abled children and young people. Our home repair program for seniors also funded by CDBG, and food insecurity funding at $300,000 pursuant to your direction. Of course, this is our big 800-pound gorilla of police and fire headquarters and training, $96 million. The bond interest, we will incur a bond payment in our first year. It'll be due in February, assuming that we move forward. We've also committed to Trust for Public Lands for our riverfront trail project, and we've allocated money for Grant Match. There will be some technical changes in our allocation of funds, and Althea will go over that based on some feedback that we received from you, as well as some technical information that we realize that we can fund from T-SLOSS. So we'll be talking about that a little bit later. So some of these numbers will change slightly as we get into the home stretch on the budget, but the new initiatives remain the same. These are projects that are, again, ongoing, but rebudgeted. Nothing magically carries over from year to year. We have to rebudget, especially projects that are inside of our operating budget. Street lights, street and sidewalk lighting is a partnership with Georgia Power and with Greystone. We contract with them to provide the lights, and we pay for the utilities associated with them. And so I am going to, so this is the overall layout of the budget. You can see that capital outlays for police and fire, public safety, is our very large part of our capital budget. And as I said, the list I circulated this morning provides you with more detail. So with that, I am going to go ahead and hand it off to our esteemed Chief Financial Officer, and I will be here to, we will both be here to answer any questions as you move forward with opening the public hearing.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Okay, I'll pick up where Ms. Subedon left off. On this slide, we provide the citywide overview comparing the amended budget of 2025 to the proposed fiscal year 2026 budget. As you can see, the general fund accounts for about $196 million, which reflects a 2.2% increase when compared to fiscal year 2025. And that change reflects the net impact of two key changes, which is the increase in transfers out and the reduction of capital projects. Our capital projects category encompasses all capital items citywide. This category shows the most significant growth with a 310% increase. And this increase is primarily driven by the Public Safety Capital Improvement Plan, your new police and fire facilities. And other funds are down by about 11%, and that's primarily due to the completion of one-time expenditures from the prior fiscal year. Now, um... I had an additional slide, but I guess it didn't get picked up, so that's okay, we'll skip that. Okay, this slide is our starting point for discussing revenue, looking at all sources citywide, before we break them down by fund classification. Our citywide revenue sources are diverse and are generated across multiple funds, which we will discuss later in the presentation. Here you can see the full picture of how we're funding operations and investments across the city for fiscal year 2026. I'll just touch on the top three largest revenue sources, excuse me, revenue sources, which the first one includes our bond proceeds, which account for 22% of our overall revenue source. And these funds are dedicated to two major projects, fire and police facilities. And it's also important to note that these proceeds are not recurring. These are one-time proceeds that can only be used for the construction of those facilities. Our second-largest revenue source is our budgeted use of reserves, which accounts for about 18%. This is, this is primarily due to the transfers out to fund your capital projects, which we've moved from the general fund to its own capital fund so that we can better track and manage those expenses. And a large number of those budgeted use of reserves come from the general fund. Our third-largest revenue source would be our property tax, and this is citywide. Property tax is a recurring revenue stream. They provide the most stable funding source for the city, and it's essential services like public works, public safety, road maintenance, and other sources of expenses. On the previous slide, we saw the percentages of each of those revenue sources. On this slide, we're basically just comparing those revenue sources against the amended fiscal year 2025 budget, and you can see the changes from each revenue source from year to year. Now we'll touch on the citywide expenses uses, meaning where is the money going? This slide just breaks down how the city allocates its budget across all major service areas. It shows both the dollar amounts and the percentages of each area. The largest share of our budget, again, I'll just touch on the top three and keep it moving. The top, your number-one source of use citywide is for public safety, which accounts for $166 million. Number two, citywide use is general government, which accounts for about $80 million, and this supports the operation of administration, finance, legal, human resources, NIT, and other essential services that the city provides internally and externally to the public. Our third largest citywide use would be your public works department, which accounts for about $79.6 million. And again, this is to maintain the streets, stormwater, facility upkeep, and other critical infrastructure needs. Again, this is a slide just showing the year-to-year comparison of, when you compare the 2025 budget to the 2026 budget, it shows you the changes in those functions from year to year. Now that we've reviewed the citywide revenues and expenses, we're going to shift our focus to just the general fund. I won't spend much time here, but it's important to know that the general fund is the city's primary operating fund. It's where most of the day-to-day activity happens, including public works, again, public safety, parks, administration, and other core sources. In this section, we'll first look at where the general fund revenues come from and how those sources have changed over time, breaking it down by type and by function so that we can see how those dollars are allocated to deliver city services. When we narrow down the focus of citywide revenues to just the general fund, you can see a different picture of how we finance day-to-day operations. These are the dollars that keep our core city services running. Again, I'll just touch on the top three, which is the number-one, single-largest source of general fund revenue, which makes up for about a third of the revenue sources, is your property, basically are your property taxes. Second-largest, budgeted use of reserves, which account for 26%, and your local option sales tax, which account for 19%. The next slide is just a comparative view of revenue sources from '25 to '26, showing you how those revenue sources have changed from one year to the next. Now that we've seen where our general fund revenue comes from, this slide is basically showing you how we utilize those funds to deliver city services. And this here is by category. Personnel makes up for $85.3 million of our overall $196 million general fund budget. Contracted services account for $39.8 million of general fund expenses by type. And supplies account for $13.7 million. I'll just touch on the top three for each of these slides. Again, this is just a side-by-side view from '25 comparing it to '26, and how those expense types have either increased or decreased or remained stable. I also wanted to include the transfers out, showing how the general fund is supporting other funds, and this is the breakdown of the $48 million budget for transfers out to general fund. This chart just breaks out the general fund expenses by function. Public safety, again, accounting for the largest use of the general fund dollars at $61.1 million. General government accounts for $51 million, and transfers out, which accounts for $48 million, which accounts for our third-largest use of general fund dollars. Again, a side-by-side comparison from fiscal year '25 to '26. Our next slide, we go into those other funds that make up the total citywide budget. Each fund has a specific purpose and use, and some of those funds are restricted. We'll start off with the special revenue fund, capital projects fund, debt service funds, and an enterprise fund. Your special revenue funds accounts for resources that are legally restricted for specific purposes, whether from the state, or federal, or by the federal laws, or grants, or dedicated local revenues. Special revenues funds are projected at $20.5 million, which accounts for, excuse me, it's $21.5 million, but it has decreased by 27.6%. And that's primarily due to, as I mentioned the last time, we had a $5.8 million reduction in the school zone traffic camera fund, and that's continued by drawing down those reserves. And also as a result of dropping revenue that's coming in for that fund. So we did see a significant reduction in the school zone camera fund. Also, OPER, where we are using the fund year by year, it decreased by $3.6 million based on the available dollars remaining. And multiple grant funds decreased by $1.5 million, which brings you a total of $8.1 million in reduction for our special revenue funds. I skipped too far ahead. Okay, our capital projects funds, these track the resources used for major construction, infrastructure improvements, and one-time capital purchases. This is where we manage big projects and long-term investments. This chart just shows the breakdown of our capital projects funds for fiscal year '26. The largest portion, which is about 50%, is dedicated to, again, the public safety facilities at $96.3 million. The capital improvement plan fund makes up for about 19%. Those were the funds that were initially captured in the general fund, but we've moved them to a capital project fund so that we can better track those expenses. T-SLOSS is also a part of the capital projects fund, and it accounts for 12% of the overall capital projects fund's budget. Excuse me? One and two. Again, this is just a side-by-side view of our capital projects funds comparing them to fiscal year 2025, and also included on this chart is our debt service fund, which you can see is, for 2026, we have a $3.6 million increase due to the new bond issue that we would, new bond issue payment that will be due in February, and that's all interest payment. Next is our enterprise funds. Your enterprise funds are intended to be self-sustaining, generating revenue primarily from user fees to cover the cost of providing specific services. Solid waste accounts for, is a part of the enterprise fund, and also the Wolf Creek Amphitheater accounts for enterprise fund budget. This is just a side-by-side view from fiscal year '25 to '26, and what's also included are your trust and custodial funds and your component unit funds. This is the five-year capital plan, which is estimated to cost about $346 million over the course of the next five years. This is a breakdown of year one, what is included in your capital projects plan for fiscal year 2026. what is included in your capital projects plan for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. The transportation special purpose local option sales tax, this just is a breakdown of the use of those funds by the category, by the categories, which operations and safety improvements, we've budgeted about twelve point seven million dollars. And the maintenance and safety improvements, we've budgeted about twenty-six point eight million dollars. This is just a reminder of the next hearing dates, which one is scheduled for tonight. And the final budget adoption will be held on September ninth at seven P M. We did have a last slide, which we will be proposing revisions. It didn't make it on the PowerPoint. So the next meeting, you will see those revisions. We had some changes that we need to make. And one of the changes will be, we've moved it, we've moved a position from public affairs back to the city clerk's budget. Also, we've identified some additional resources that can be utilized for public works projects. We can use those funds, T-SLOSS funds, to cover those items, so we won't need to make that transfer from the general fund for close to two million dollars. Also, we've identified funds that we've budgeted, grant funds, matching funds that we can utilize the T-SLOSS funds versus using general fund reserves to help match those dollars for those projects. And that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
All right, this is a public hearing, so we're gonna go ahead and first open the public hearing so that we can hear any questions or comments we have from our citizens. Mr. Clerk, did we have any people fill out speakers' cards?
No, sir. We did not receive any speaker cards this morning. I did note Mr. Grimes and Ms. Robinson in the audience. I didn't know if they wanted to offer public comment, but we did not receive any cards.
All right, did anyone in the audience have any questions, comments, concerns, queries, illusions, disillusions, hallucinations? All right, seeing and hearing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and open it up to council for questions and comments, beginning with Mayor Pro Tim Pritchett.
Yes, I have a question about the hotel motel tax. In one of the slides, it showed that it was in a negative number.
The transfer?
I can answer that. In the transfers out, it's, it's not literally negative, but most of the transfers are from general fund to another fund because that provides a credit to the general fund to cover certain items. It's showing with a negative, but it's not actually reduced. You'll see it elsewhere in the budget, and you'll see that it's actually gone up.
Okay, thank you.
I understand that someone just walked in, but we're in the council questions portion, so we'll come back afterwards. Dr. Rowe?
Thank you, I have a couple. On page twenty-eight, we had the tree fund, refundable escrow fund. How much money is available for replanting? I know, you know, when they remove trees, you have to hold it, and then you issue the money back. But how much is available to go to our tree recompense so that we can install trees throughout the city?
Would that be the non-refundable amount?
Right.
About one point seven million dollars.
Okay. For the capital projects, and I'm looking at this cost breakdown, and this may be a question for the city manager. As it relates to the Trauma Crow park drainage and sidewalks, is this a soft surface trail as well as the improvements? Because I know water is standing in parts of the park. Does that include both, or?
I think this is specific to drainage improvements, and I think we already have a P O for that, so that work is either ongoing or getting ready to be, to be done. I can get back to you on the-
Soft surface.
On the soft surface at Trauma Crow.
Okay. And then, what is C A B renovations? What is on this list?
Yeah, that's council, that's city admin. As you know, when we bought the building, the second floor was renovated. The first floor was not. Anybody who's been over there?
Yeah, yeah.
Somebody affectionately referred to it as, "When you buy a house, and your basement is unfinished."
Oh, yeah.
And so, anybody who's been over there knows that we have work to do, and we're not in the best shape on the first floor.
And then, last but not least, one of the things that, I guess constituents have been lobbying before for a couple of years, are the soft surface trails. I mean, not the soft surface trails, the turf in the fields at Sandtown. Have y'all looked at that at all?
We, we kind of looked, and then we took our glasses off, and then we put them back on, and we took them off and put them back on. Going to artificial turf is really, really pricey. And so, some of these other projects for this year, if you noticed, our five-year projection on our, on our capital plan is a very large number. And some of those, what I would call second-tier, high-level improvements, we're kind of pushing out and prioritizing the things that are really necessary, particularly around our build-out of Municipal Court and Cedar Grove, both of which we're using a pay-go method versus borrowing money to do those projects.
Okay. So I'll be looking for grants. Thank you.
No further questions.
Councilwoman Sebastian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna piggyback on something that Councilmember Royal just said. I really think we need to come up with a master turf plan for the city and figure out where we are and what we're gonna do. And as she finished off, was saying, looking for grants, so that we can try and see if we get help doing these things rather than depending on our own internal funds alone. So I'd love to see us take that on. On slide twenty-seven, this is probably just for my own edification, because I, I know what's happening out there in, in the world or in the wild, as the young people say. But I really wanted to see if that is a reason why some of these numbers in slide twenty-seven are looking the way that they're looking. I see overall, we're expecting a negative one point six percent reduction in revenue. But I also saw the license and permit fees going up by over twelve percent. And things like the business occupation excise tax and local option sales tax are kind of moving the other way. So I guess my question is, are we being really, really conservative here? Or do we think that this is what it really is gonna turn out to be?
So I am being conservative. T A V T, which is the motor vehicle tax as an example, we saw a huge surge in twenty-twenty-five, but we're seeing it level off in twenty-twenty-six, or, I mean, in, in year-to-date twenty-twenty-five. We have seen increase in some of the other areas. But we are being conservative, because instead of just sort of annualizing what we received this year and saying, "Oh, yeah, we're gonna receive that next year," we're doing a more thoughtful look at the most, the most recent months. And we are seeing a little bit of, you know, tamping down. So I thought, especially with everything that we are encountering, I thought it was more wise to go with a more conservative projection on our revenue. You can always, you know, you can always use extra money.
Absolutely.
And I'd like to add that with the reduction in budgeted use of reserves, that number is skewed. So that's typically not a recurring use of revenue, so.
Okay. Did we, some time ago, we had a long discussion over a master lighting plan, and I saw some money, some monies in the budget for, for street lighting. I don't recall us approving one, so someone refresh my memory if we did. And if we did not, how do we, how, how are we allocating? What's our strategy for this lighting money?
I can answer that. What I shared is, so we do have the, the lighting master plan. It was presented to you. It was done before I got here, but it was presented to you. And so what we have done is allocated money every year for utilities associated with street lighting. And earlier this year, we met with both Greystone and Georgia Power. And what we're going with is low-hanging fruit. Places where they have poles already, where they can bring street lighting. I've instructed the public works department that anytime we open a sidewalk going forward, we need pedestrian lights. And so, we're, we're, our program is evolving. We have not used the full million dollars in the last two years. Our goal is to be able to build up to that. And we really want to light some of our really darkest corridors, but we're going with low-hanging fruit. So there are some areas where there is no infrastructure at all, meaning no underground infrastructure, no poles. Camp Creek is an example. That will take longer and will cost more. But as an example, we are literally in the process of finalizing our, our agreements with Georgia Power to bring lighting to places that do have poles, do have infrastructure, so that we can start to really light up the city. And we'll, we'll bring you like a mid-year report on that once we've gotten confirmation and schedule from Georgia Power and Greystone.
So, so what I didn't hear is the status of the master lighting plan, because what I remember asking that then team is, as, you know where I'm going with clean energy, as some of these technologies get cheaper, right? Then we, that we may not need the level of underground infrastructure to, to put some lights where some lights need to be. As a matter of fact, at the parks, cameras on solar, for example, right? So if, if we, what I asked the last team that was here is to look at options for like areas like District Four, where you may have, and District Seven, where you may have lack of infrastructure, to see if solar technology, and this has been a few years now, can be used in those areas. So I would love to see us do that. I, I believe I sent the team some information I had years ago. I'll try and dig that up and forward it to you guys. But that would mean revisiting the master lighting plan, even though you're doing this infilling strategy, which is good. I'm not complaining at all. I'm saying we have to keep the bigger picture in mind, because there are some areas where lights are needed, but they're no infrastructure. And as we keep having these communities come back online from, that were permitted on the Fulton County, especially in areas like Four, it's very, very dark in the night. And, you know, there are a lot of people moving here who are not familiar with these dark roads, and more people are even walking. So I'm concerned about not having enough lights in certain parts of the city, where we probably could look at using solar technology.
We are incorporating solar. We did a test over at Wolf Creek, just to see kind of how it worked. We are gonna be doing solar in several of our parks and working to see where solar is gonna make the most sense for us on, on our right-of-way as well.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all the questions, Sam.
Councilwoman Willis?
Thank you. On the Capitol project cost breakdown, I don't see Walkham Mall Park tennis courts on it. We have one, and that court is cracked. So I would ask that we go back and look at the funding for that, because I would not want to have to interrupt services due to the crack court. And it is a liability to have people playing tennis on a crack tennis court. And the last time we closed tennis courts because of crack courts, it was a major public outcry. We have some avid tennis players here in the city of South Fulton. Around the festivals, I would like for us to look at making sure that we have the festivals funded. One festival should not be receiving a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then, we have to figure out how we're gonna fund the other festivals. I've attended a couple of festivals in District Four that really need support. I have a festival that I have to get support. And so I need to figure out and see, and you know I had my one-on-one, and you showed me some of the things. Are these festivals funded in the park and recreation budget? I need to make sure. Or we need to make sure that we have more funding. I know there is one typically in District One. I don't know how that's typically funded, the Soul Food Festival. I know the Caribbean Festival. I know there's a Yeek Festival. But there's one festival that's consistently getting a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And none of these other festivals are getting anything. So we need to look at that. So the balance of my, the budget, in my opinion, is not balanced until we make sure that all of our needs are met. The union, I would ask that the city attorney bring us an update on the collective bargaining agreement. I know that can't be discussed publicly, but that needs to be handled. I know what y'all feel, but I know what I read. And so, we need to discuss that executive session, and we need to make sure we budget that accordingly. Hotel Motel, C V B, Development Authority, PAL, all of these organizations that we are giving money to, we need a detailed budget. I do not, I'm not gonna go along with constantly funding these organizations, and we're not getting the information. That's not, that's not, my fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers is to know what's going on with our tax dollars. And we, and, and some people forget, we pay taxes too. I pay taxes too. And the Willises has been proud taxpayers since nineteen-seventy-seven in this region. And we multiply, I own a house. My brother-in-law own a house. And my mother-in-law has been in the same house since nineteen-seventy-seven. So we pay a lot of taxes in this region. So I want to know what's going on with our tax dollars. As it relates to hotel motel tax, I want to see details. I don't want to see summations. I want to see details. C V B, what are they spending the money on? What are they going to spend the money on? And what is to ask? Because some of these organizations are supposed to be raising money. We're not supposed to be consistently funding them. Do we need to put something in the budget around project management? Because we constantly, every year, we fund things, but we come back and we fund things. Like, for example, the city lights. We've been talking about the city lights. This predates you. The city, the, 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 we're still in the dark. And I'm ready to see in South Fulton. So we need to figure out what we need to do as far as funding some of the, the, the lighting. Because we, every year, we talk about it. But I, I mean, I heard Councilmember Bell got some lights, but over in Walkham Mall area, Cliff and Dale, I don't see any lights. And so, we need to figure out how we can expedite that. And then maybe it's around project management. Same thing with the, some of the things that we identified and put in the budget is around the Walkham Mall Park. I see Capitol Improvement Project, but Walkham Mall Park improvements, what's the details? Is that for the floors? Is that what that is, the one point six eight nine? Okay. I'm almost done. So for me, I, I'm just a little, I'm just a, you know, we need to figure out how we can get some project management and, and give us some timelines around some of these projects to include my welcoming center. Again, spoke with the landowner yesterday from East Point. They still have not heard from anybody around the easement. And I, I'm getting tired of residents asking me when we're gonna break ground construction. I need a project plan. Give me a timeline. Thank you.
You have the floor, Madam Superdame.
So Rome wasn't built in a day. Cities don't get built in eight years. Patience is a virtue. I admit, it's not my virtue, but it's a virtue.
And significant progress has been made in the city. We are pressing hard, um, but we have to depend on contractors. We have to go through a process. Um, at some point, you need to trust and believe that the city is working hard on your behalf. Because you talked to somebody in East Point and they didn't hear from us, you're probably talking to the wrong person. We are in close communication, trying to negotiate the easement, trying to negotiate the sewer. And what I have asked is that we just be allowed to do the work and I promise you you will get your deliveries. My track record has demonstrated that me and the team deliver on your projects. I know it takes long. I don't have any control over certain parts of the process. We do our very best to deliver projects to you. Many of these projects predated me. And so we're working hard to deliver on the projects and we have, um, and we have project management. Some of, some people we'll introduce tonight are new to the team. They're coming on board to help us with all these projects in addition to our big C I P in which we have contracted our, um, uh, we have contracted our project management. Um, the Welcome All is for the floors, the front counter and floors. Um, the paint of the, update of the paint. We're going to replace some of that old furniture, um, signage. And it, like, like all facilities, at this point, we have a scope of work when we go to do renovations. Make sure our major systems are working properly. So it is, it is for, for all those things. It does not include the tennis court, like I told you. Um, if that's the will of the council, we will work through. We have some changes in the budget to make, like I told you earlier. We can work those in, work that in if that's the will of the council. In terms of the festival, there was a bit of a miscue and, and we intend to do the restrooms at Welcome All as well. Um, in terms of the, um, funding for your events, that was a bit of a miscue between our office and the clerk's office. We did add a slide indicating that the mayor, um, the mayor's office gets thirty thousand dollars for a signature and secondary event. And each councilperson gets twenty thousand. What I told them to do, and you'll see it on, see it later on, will be that, um, we are giving more flexibility because sometimes your signature event ends up costing less. And so you want to allocate your money to a secondary event or another secondary event. And we're, we're here to serve you, you know, if these are the projects that you want to do. One thing I will say is the Parks Department, um, has indicated a desire and I support their desire to put a moratorium on parks events. Um, primarily because we got some criticism that it appears that our events are duplicative of council events and are competing with council events. So there are some events that in twenty-six, the Parks Department is not intending to put on. Because some of them are duplicative of what you all are, are already doing. And we only have so many resources and their ready, resources are dedicated to supporting the events that you all are putting on for the community. And so it doesn't really make sense to do both. Um, if there is a desire for funding for festivals which are going to be pulled out of your signature event and funded differently, then I need to know what that is, how that looks, so that we can get that together and fix it before our next, not, not before tonight, but before our next meeting. So if I can get some clarity around how you want to, that to look. Cause for example, I believe that the International Fest is listed as Councilwoman Sebastian's signature event. So if we're pulling it out and doing it separately, I would need to know what the council desire is so we can rework those numbers. Um, Azu Car is a citywide event. It was approved as a citywide event for the last two years. And so it's in the category of Juneteenth State of the City and it's budgeted in the public, uh, the Cultural Affairs Department. It's not budgeted in parks. It's, it's held out and done different, separately and, and differently. And I haven't gotten feedback that the council wants to change that. If you do, now's the time to let me know so we can make those modifications. Um, we did hear your request on the details on the outside agencies. I did not include PAL. Um, we are getting that information for you. We will have that information for you this week. Um, we weren't able to get it done in time for this meeting, but we will have the breakdown. Um, C V B and Hotel Motel are the same thing. Um, S F D A, D D A and PAL, we will get those budget details for you. Um, and we will have them for you in advance of the, in advance of the, um, approval of the budget. In terms of the requirements for, um, for the, um, for the Welcome Center, the east, the easement is going through East Point for their approval. Um, they requested additional information for, from us on the trees in the right of way. We have a new city arborist and so he is going to be, uh, is already engaged in working with giving them that information. So we are talking to the arborist in East Point, which may be different than your contact at East Point. But be assured, we are moving the projects forward. We have no reason to try not to. In terms of the courts, um, what we'll do is take a look and try to get an estimate of the course at Welcome All to see how much we need to add in order for that project to go forward, if that's the will of the council. So, you know, I understand that there are some frustrations, but I do ask for your patience and understanding that we are working feverishly to make sure that your projects, um, come to fruition.
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Gums.
Thank you, City Manager, for that, uh, thorough response and I guess coming close to the end, you kind of get some of your, uh, questions answered. I did have a concern about Cliftondale and the turf surface for the soccer field, but you addressed that. I, I did want to revisit the sidewalk, um, maintenance and decorative light plan. I do see it in the budget, but is that going to be enough to kind of cover those? Because running around this city, the entire city, our sidewalks are atrocious. Um, some of them are very damaged and it could cause possibly liability, um, walking on them. Cause a lot of them, because of the roots are lifting and then they're dirty. They don't really give an attractive appearance to the city. So I, I know that we talked about the sidewalk maintenance, but I'm just wondering and curious if this will be enough to cover what we're trying to do.
So there's always, you know, there, it's, it's never enough, right? And so what we did is we looked at the whole city and we divided it up, um, a sidewalk maintenance plan. This will be reoccurring. So this is not a one-time thing, um, and your legislation, we're going to bring that forward. So it'll codify, um, where we have a sidewalk maintenance program as part of our overall plan. And it won't just involve, um, pressure cleaning. It'll involve, um, removing roots and trees that have damaged sidewalks, repairs to sidewalks, cutting back over, you know, where, where bushes and trees have, um, encroached on sidewalks. And we'll do, um, a little bit every year. And then, you know, after you get to a certain point, you go back and start over and, you know, we'll constantly have a sidewalk improvement project that's in, ongoing. And so some of that is, we are able to fund that. Um, we are able to fund that through our maintenance budget, because a lot of that is not going to be considered capital. So a repair to a crack in a sidewalk, it's not going to, it's not going to hit, you know, this, this capital list. Um, but it's incorporated in our ongoing maintenance.
Perfect, um, that's, that's pretty good. I, I, once you explained it to me. The decorative light for the sidewalks, is that possibly coming up? Especially for the new sidewalks that are happening throughout the city.
Yeah, we call them pedestrian sidewalks, pa- um, pedestrian lights for the sidewalks. And all new sidewalks will have pedestrian lights. Those that have gone in recently, we're going to go back and work with the utilities to bring pedestrian lights online.
How close do you think that we are to something like that, actually seeing it happen?
So our next sidewalks, you'll see it happen with it. Um, and what I'll do is get an idea of, you know, where the utilities are with the ones that are in place. And we'll bring that to you as part of a, part of a lighting presentation to give everybody an update on all things lighting.
Um, also, we have, um, talked about the citywide cameras, access controls and alarms. And I see that we have four hundred and forty thousand, I guess, uh, projected for that cost. Is that enough? And when we say cameras, how many cameras are we deploying across the city?
So this is like phase three of a, of a three-part program. We've been doing this and we have cameras all over the city. Um, especially in our city facilities, which some of you are very aware of. Um, but what we can do is, is let you know, you know, what phase this particular part covers. And we'll let you know what has already been done. The flock cameras are deployed citywide. They tie into our real-time crime center. Um, flock has been really good about getting them all deployed. So, but we can come back and give you more specifics around that.
And my last question in reference to the facilities, uh, repaving. All city facilities or how did you go about trying to determine which cities take, which city facilities take priority?
Yeah, we can't do all. Uh, you know, my favorite saying, you can have anything, but you can't have everything. And so what we're going to do is look at the ones that are in the worst condition and, um, and do it based on, based on that. The ones, you know, we did quite a bit of work at, um, at, um, Wolf Creek, at Burdette. Um, and then we have some others that, you know, have, you know, we did Trama Crow, I think. That, that we have some others that are in pretty tough shape. So we're doing, incrementally doing as many as we can every year.
All right, uh, Madam Attorney.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to respond briefly regarding the union. Um, there was a request at the last time I was before you all to bring, um, something to executive session. I wanted to let you know, based on that request, there is, uh, information and outside counsel appearing at executive session to give you that update.
Thank you. All right, uh, Mayor Potem Pritchett, this is your second time.
Second and last. So I, uh, do want to address, um, some, I guess what I would characterize as a snide comment, um, related to Azuka Music Fest. What Councilwoman Willis referred to as why are we funding events, um, budgeting them at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Um, Azuka Music Fest is the event that she was referring to. And Ms. Subedan explained where that falls in. So I want to say this because I want to be clear and I just want to say how offensive I find constantly, like, this is not the first time that I've heard this. This is not the first time it's been said. So I'm going to make this also clear for whoever doesn't know this. So I am first generation American. My parents were Cuban immigrants. So I am a hundred percent Hispanic and obviously I am also black. So when you look, when I came to this city as a council member and I looked at some of the other events that were being organized. Hispanic Heritage History Month was not recognized in this city. And so, um, we started recog- I, uh, sponsored a resolution to recognize Hispanic Heritage History Month. Um, Councilwoman Gums was, uh, gracious enough to, who also is Hispanic as well. Um, she coordinated with me and we, uh, at also the suggestion of other council members, we put together our first, uh, Azuka Music Fest. My aunt, who was the queen of salsa, Celia Cruz, um, is a, can y'all hear me or y'all going? Well, I can't tell because you're talking.
Oh, hold on, hold on. We got all of these, all of these, uh, I, first of all, I'm, I'm going to just take a point of order. Let's keep this indecency in order. We got all these civility pledges on the wall and all across our desks. We can disagree without being disagreeable. I'm going to return the floor to Mayor Potem Pritchett and Councilwoman Willis, you are next.
Thank you. So in saying this, my efforts to recognize Hispanic Heritage History Month with a concert, um, that honors my, uh, uh, honors the musical legacy of my aunt and other pioneers in Latin music. It's something that emphasizes the diversity that we all talk about in this city. It talks about inclusion. Hispanic people are black, white, Indian. Um, all kinds of shades, races involved in a culture. And as I saw Juneteenth being recognized, I thought that this is something that this city would like. Um, and during those times, people have enjoyed those events. Um, and they have become more successful. Last year, we held the concert like a few days after a major hurricane. And people, the, the band still came out, people enjoyed it. So I'm making this statement because nationally, my people are going through a lot. They're being pointed out, picked on, um, deported, uh, profiled and targeted. And it's a shame that I feel like the same thing is happening on this council. So I'm just going to make it very clear that we should really just like stop. And just be, um, when we're, we're looking at this budget, we may, uh, comments have been made that we don't have that many Hispanic people in this city. But we have black people in this city and Hispanic people are black people too. And we have a lot of people that visit from other cities. We have a lot of people in our city that enjoy the Hispanic culture. So, um, I hope that I don't ever have to hear about this again. You know, if it's the will of the council or the council feels that this city does not, um, cannot celebrate another culture, but in the African-American culture, then the will of the council, let it, let it be the will of the council. But I, this, this is highly offensive and I hope that from this point forward that it stops. You know, i- it's not about, to be honest, if we could have a concert that didn't cost that much, then that's what we would do. But it costs what it costs based on the venue, the equipment. And the people honestly do appreciate it and they look forward to it. And with that, I yield.
The chair recognizes Councilwoman Willis for her second time.
So this is not personal, but if you want to be honest, we all are going through a lot here in America. And we have a one hundred percent West Indian sitting up here who has a, uh, carnival every year. And his festival is not funded. West Indians are not celebrated. I have West Indian descendants, but it, this should not be about one culture. It shouldn't be about one culture. If you're going to spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to honor and celebrate two to three percent of the demographic in this city, then we should be also celebrating other demographics in this city. The last time I checked, sitting next to me, we have a one hundred percent West Indian. And he struggles every year trying to figure out how to pay for his festival. So let's not put one culture over the other. Especially when there's only a two to three percent demographic in the city. I respect the legacy of my colleague. But at the end of the day, it shouldn't be about her auntie. It should be about celebrating the culture that we have in the city from all facets and all walks of life. So I do think it's unfair that we are spending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of our tax dollars to celebrate one culture when we have other people up here who have culture they would like to celebrate. Councilmember Sebastian doesn't make it about a family member. He make it about the West He make it about the West Indian culture. And he struggles every year and it's more attended, it's, it's well-attended. He has more attendance than Azuka Fest. Every year that I have gone, it has been one to two hundred people out there. The food trucks are leaving because they're not making money. And so I'm not gonna stop talking about it. I'm gonna keep talking about it because our taxpayers deserve to know the truth. They deserve to know how our money is being spent. And I do feel that other cultures should be celebrated, not just one. Not just African-Americans, not just Hispanics, but we have West Indians in this city. We have Caucasians in the city. We're not putting a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to celebrate other festivals. So let's just be fair and let's be honest about it. And I'm gonna keep talking about it. This is not gonna be the last time you hear about it. I'm gonna keep talking about it until something change. Closed mouths don't get fed. Ms. Subidan, patience is of a virtue. But let me be a little bit more specific because I tried to not put it all out there. When I ask for something and I don't get it, I'm gonna continue to ask for it publicly until I get it. I asked for the update on the easement. Your assistant manager sent me an email and told me what the issue was. We had a meeting. And I asked for them to proceed with the options they gave me. And then I asked, where are we with those options? And I don't have anything in my inbox. So if I don't have it, I'm gonna ask. It's not about trust. It's about give me a project plan and timelines so that I can answer questions to my residents when they're asking me, when is something going to happen? And they haven't waited on that welcome center for years. I am talking to the right sources in East Point. Just like I was talking to them about the bifurcation. And I was getting information from East Point that I wasn't getting from my own city. So I'm the type of person, when I ask you for details, if I don't get it, it does annoy me. Because I don't want my residents to keep asking me what's the update for something and I don't have anything to give them. The floors at Welcome Mall Park, how more patient can I be? We've been talking about these floors for the past two years. I still don't have a project plan on when we gonna start. The clay courts, I have documented emails when I was told that those clay courts at the tennis court was in pro- was in progress of being restored. And you were gonna change the clay course to regular course. I have documented emails. I have yet to be told when that project was gonna be done. And then I was told a couple of meters ago, oh no, that's a twenty-six expenditure, twenty-twenty-six expenditure. When I was told all along that the clay court's restoration was in progress.
Councilwoman Willis, I'm sorry, that's your, that's your time.
What I'm saying is not, don't put it out here that I'm not being patient when I'm asking for information and I'm not getting it. Cause that's what's happening with me. I ask for information and I'm not getting it. And again, you're gonna keep hearing about me advocating for all cultures to be celebrated. Not just one. Thank you.
Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, don't know where to start. Look, um, I've said this before, I've said this before publicly, said so in these council meetings. That when I was running for office in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, one of the things that I keep hearing and the residents of District Four kept saying to me is that nothing happens out here, including when the parks were putting on events. Nothing was happening in District Four. And part of the challenge with that was because as, as of yet, we still don't have a building in District Four except the two fire stations and a storefront police station. This council made a decision to do a community center. And Ms. Subidan, I have a question for you around City Grove. How much money did we transfer over from that project from last year? Do you recall?
From twenty-four? It wasn't funded in twenty-four. The project was approved in January of twenty-five, this year. Fiscal twenty-five. Um, we have about a million dollars that is allocated to the project in, um, in architectural design, site development. Um, I know nobody wants to hear that patience is a virtue, but the reality is you don't just throw up a building. You have to do a full site development. It has to take all of the utilities into consideration. All of that work is being done now. Um, I have exchanged emails with you to say we will expect to have a community presentation on the renderings, the floor plan, the architectural designs. I've asked them to create renderings that are people-friendly as opposed to architectural and, um, engineering-friendly so that it'll be understandable to the community. And so, um, there was no money carried over from fiscal twenty-four because in twenty-four, it was just an idea.
Thank you. Um, but I've also requested, which I think we should go to the community with, a project plan. And I've, I've talked about this before. So, so I just wanna make sure it's coming because I, I don't wanna be answering the questions, when are we gonna start, when are we gonna finish? Because the pressure that I feel as the council member, and it's not about me and what I want, it's what the community has been asking for. And we're gonna see a little bit of a relief once we finish that, um, little community room at Fire Station Six and I communicated there's already a line that's, um, that's queuing for the use of that facility. So I, I just, I was gonna talk about this before and I, I, I pulled it back because I know we have been talking about it over email. But the reason why I'm talking about it is, and this is not the only project that I, I feel like, and I've said this to you, that I feel like even though things are happening, it's not communicated well to us so that when we ask questions about it, we cannot communicate them out. And I keep talking about this because it's, it's a problem. Because we can't keep coming to these meetings and saying we're approving this and whatever not. And then in acts in the community, questions and we don't have the answers. It's, it doesn't look good and it doesn't feel good. Councilmember Willis, um, my festival, it's an international festival. It basically had a lot of Caribbean thing to it because obviously, as you said, I am, um, I am Caribbean by birth, but I'm fully much American. Um, uh, uh, no, but I wanted to let you know that, you know, part of our heritage in the West Indies is to make do with what we got. And so it, it is, it is no secret that some of the things that happen in District Four that have been done out there basically because they're open events, because we have no facilities. Um, they tend to be a little different than things that happen in other parts of the city. Sling Fest is another one. We, in October, we're gonna do this car show and fish fry thing at Wilkinson Mill Park. Sling Fest had people from ten states that were here. And the reason why I'm mentioning this whole aspect of them being different is that I really think as a government and as a council, we need to work towards taking some of these events and making them city events, just like Azuka Fest. And, and I have no issues at all with Azuka Fest. As a matter of fact, as I, I mentioned, it's an international, international festival because all are welcome. Because we, we, we have a city and absolutely no way I wanna ever be part of dividing our community across culture. You know, we bring people together. We enjoy food, music, dress, everything from across the world. We had a big Asian contingent last year, right? Which we hope to have again this year. And so we, we are just making the tent bigger. Because once you love people, doesn't matter where they come from. Just love people. And the, the, the addition to that is, you know, enjoy some great companies, learn some things about other places that you may either want to visit or you may not even have visited before, right? So that's the idea for me behind throwing this international fest, not just because I'm Western. And yes, that has something to do with it. But I'm a proud Antiguan and dual citizenship. So I joke all the time. If ICE wanna come and send me back to Antigua, I can go and hang out on the beach. Just give me a big check. Okay, so I'm just saying, I think we need to just take the temperature down a little bit and support these wonderful events that celebrate people from all over the world. Because you know what? We are an international city. That's what we're trying to be, an international city. Cause I talk to people all the time across this city. And you would not imagine some of the connections of the people that, that I meet, that not only work across the world, but come from different places here. So, wh- when, as I said, West Indians, we stretch things. So whether we have a penny, a hundred bucks, we're gonna stretch that and we are gonna have a good time. So again, promotion. And, and Ms. Subidan, I do apologize because there's been a little bit of mix-up in the scheduling. But, um, we will have a good time. We will start earlier this year so we can come and support Azuka Fest later in the afternoon, evening. But on September twentieth, join us at Wilkinson Mill Park for our second international festival. They are on the same day. Yeah, they are on the same day. It's, 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 it was the same way last year, but it's fine. It's fine. It, it's fine. It'll, it'll work out. Um, District Seven, Ms., um, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Pritchett, I will work with you next year and we will plan these two events and we will plan them separately on different days so that we can give maximum support. All right? Thank you.
Councilwoman Bill.
All right. So I just wanna take us back a little bit. Um, on the capital project breakdown for Burdette Park, just wanted to make sure that the renovations will include the kitchen and restrooms. Okay, are there anything other lawn item details as, as it relates to that particular?
Um, no, I, you know, as we go through the project, if there's something that comes up, sometimes when you like take up the bathroom, there's a plumbing issue, we just take care of it. Um, and, you know, if necessary, we move projects, move money around to do it. But that's the scope of the project.
I just wanted to be sure. Thank you. And I, I appreciate the improvements that have already taken place at Burdette. My next question is speed bumps. I've received a lot of requests and I know we spoke about this. A lot of my questions are asked prior to the meeting. Um, but wanted to, wanted to get you to address the speed bumps. Um, received a lot of requests as it relates to speed bumps and, um, curb appeal around the CSX train station. That's been a, a major impact for residents, but in additional areas around the city as well.
Sure. So our traffic calming, we've seen an uptick in fiscal twenty-five. We've, um, we made some changes. The council agreed to reduce the number of, um, residents it takes and we included renters. And so we've seen a nice uptick in the number of traffic calming, um, projects that we've put out. Um, Dr. Cooper and the Public Works Department really drive that process. And, um, I shared that link with you and, um, hope that you send it out to your residents so that they know the process. They have to gather the signatures. We then do a traffic study and determine if it meets the warrants for speed bumps and then we, we go ahead and execute it. We do have money, um, in the, um, traffic calming fund to support, um, traffic calming citywide. Um, I don't wanna guess, but it's, it's enough. But I can, I can get the exact amount in the fund and let you know.
Dr. Ralph, this is your second time.
Um, thank you. Um, I know last year we made the effort to make sure our events calendars were sinking. It didn't work, clearly. Um, it was so many events I wanted to go to that I couldn't because they were bumping up against each other. Um, I would ask that the city manager bring us before we start going too deep in the planning of twenty-six, the key dates that we already know, whether it's our main events or events that we see happening every year in our city. Example, like the Divine Night. If we already know that day, put it, put it out there so we can see before we get to that December meeting, people are adding all these dates and, um, I know there was an effort for, I think, our Parks Department to reach out and start asking about our signature events. Like, can we see those? Because I do think it's way too many events. It's like over the top. And I also wanna remind everybody that in twenty twenty-three, we unanimously voted as a council to recognize Hispanic Heritage Month. That was brought, brought to us by Councilwoman Gums and Councilwoman Pritchett. And I, you know, we have all these events. They're open up to everybody, not even just to our districts, whether, whether we're hoping that. We need to remind people. So it's not about race. Um, it's about our, our citizens being able to participate in things. And so we need to remind people of that. Um, I hope we grow all these events. I've been to the international festival that Councilman, um, Sebastian has hosted, as well as Azuka Festival. And for the last two years, it's just been general. I don't remember. I think the first year kinda kicked it off, Celia Cruz, but the other ones have not. I've even looked at the collateral for, for this year's. So again, uh, I hope we don't be getting into this divisive kind of politics. I don't think it works well and it's not a good reflection of our city. Many of us enjoy and embrace diversity. So I'll leave it at that.
All right. Thank you. All right. I've got a few closing comments. First off, um, I don't know if you all can see this sheet. Hopefully you all have this in the presentation. I counted twenty-five capital projects. Um, not including our ninety-six million for the new facilities. Madam City Manager, thank you for all you do. I don't know when you sleep. Um, I have warned us repeatedly this year that you cannot make one of us look bad without making all of us look bad. We cannot argue publicly about how we're spending money or complain publicly about unfinished products, projects. Then turn around and ask our residents to raise or eliminate our millage rate cap for ninety-six million dollars in bonds. It just, it doesn't work. You know, some of these conversations, I know that we're frustrated. We have these things. We need to talk about these privately because there are people that see this and then wonder how we're going to get these buildings done. I have every confidence in you, Madam City Manager, that you can. But it's just not a good look. Um, it's, you, it's been said, we, I do wanna just talk for a brief minute about events. We do have two festivals over a hundred fifty thousand. One is Juneteenth, which is a federal holiday. Um, I believe that is the most American of holidays because it recognizes that none of us are free until all of us are free. Um, for the record, before you were on council, some, some members who knew the council, they may not know all of our history. But before you were on council, um, Mayor Pro Tim Pritchett, I did recognize Latinx Heritage Month. Um, it came straight from staff. That was back in twenty twenty-one. And we did have another, uh, incredible festival for three years in Wilkerson Mill Park. Mayor Pro, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Mark Baker, um, and Yanazda Longworth had done this, uh, Friendsgiving that recognized Indigenous peoples. The last festival, we had, we had First Nation peoples from Mexico and Canada. They traveled, they traveled as far as Mexico, Canada and, um, Oklahoma to Wilkerson Mill Park for this festival. So we have a long tradition of that. Um, thank you for your comments though. Uh, uh, Councilman Sebastian and for saying that we are an international- uh, Councilman Sebastian, and for saying that we are an international city. Uh, those of you all who may not know, Councilwoman Wi- Williams Brown is not with us because she is in Lagos this week, uh, with a delegation. So we continue the work of, uh, building internationalism in our city. The events calendar, we, we, we did try and do, but I do think it's important, like, we can, we can set an events calendar in January. But then if at every council meeting, we approve new events, um, things will just, they, they, they will happen. Um, I, I do think that, i- it does concern me, and this is, this is really a budget thing. It does concern me. How many people are in the Parks and Recs Department and Cultural Affairs? What's the staff?
Not even. Um, Cultural Affairs is a small staff.
Right.
Um, and the majority of the park staff are not engaged in events. So it's probably a group of ten people that are engaged in supporting events.
Alright, well, we, we might need to grow our Cultural Affairs staff, but I'm, I'm, I'm concerned that when there are duplicative events, that, that, that the Bureau of Parks, Recs and Cultural Affairs, whose job it should be to do those events, that they're canceling their events so that council people can do events. And we, we, each one of us have a staff of like one. I have a staff of two, but like that's, I think that it should probably work in the other direction, as, as Councilman Sebastian said. Juneteenth started off as a, as a resolution that I wrote and then it became a city event. Azuka has become a city event. I moved the state of the city address to our city anniversary, so that our city anniversary would become a city event. And, uh, right now, we are working on this Global South Film Festival. It's another international film festival. It talks about Black and Brown peoples across the Southern Hemisphere. We had West Indian films last year. We will have them this year as well. And we are looking at bringing festival sponsors. So I think that that is something that we really need to look, uh, into a bit more. It's like, how can we have some of these festivals and events, you know, sponsored by whomever? Um, we had Greystone helped sponsor Juneteenth and they are expanding that partnership. So I think that there, there are funding opportunities there. But I do think that these should, maybe they start as council events, but they should probably move into the purview of Cultural Affairs, our Cultural Affairs Department. I do have three quick questions. Um, on your slide, Madam City Ma- Madam City Manager, I saw one hundred and six million for the two public safety facilities, but I, this number of one hundred thirteen million has been bandied about. So can you just talk about that difference?
Sure. One hundred and thirteen is our, essentially our all-in cost. Um, it's the cost of the bid, the cost of issuing the bonds. Um, it's our, the cost of project management. It's our all-in cost. Ninety-six is what we are intending to, to borrow through the bonds. The remainder is what we're gonna be funding with our own dollars.
Okay, and then, uh, I saw six million for courts. Again, seven million is a number I've heard. Could you talk about that difference?
Yes, sev- six million is what we intend in year one. And so, again, being very conservative, you know, I'm also trying to manage expectations. You know, there's only so much that physically can be accomplished in a twelve-month period. And part of, part of what we do is look from a project management perspective of how long will it take for the engineering and the architectural and the site design to be done? How long will it take to bid it? How long will it take to do the construction? And so what we're trying to do here is very strategically budget the amount that we think we will need in the fiscal year upcoming.
Okay, and then the, um, the Parks Master Plan, there's, there's, we have this Parks Master Plan. I think we got enough on our plate for now, but could you talk about the funding for that and future projects?
So in actuality, the funding of these parks projects is funding your Parks Master Plan. So we have looked at the Parks Master Plan. Some of you know that we are updating it to include trails. Um, at some point, that will be, you know, brought back to you. But every project in here is referenced in your Parks Master Plan. We're not calling it a master plan update necessarily, but it is what we're using to guide us. There's nothing that we're doing here that's not been mentioned or was mentioned as part of your Parks Master Plan. And at some point, when the trail aspect is done, we will bring you an update to say, here's what you originally adopted, here's what we're asking you to adopt, here's what we've done so far.
Alright, and, um, last thing, the, 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 there were conversations about the turf, but I know that like sports fans and those of us who play turf, um, artificial turf that increases injuries for things, especially like career ending injuries like ACL. So I think that if we are gonna go in that direction, we probably need to look at our, 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 our risk management assessment for insurance costs. And that leads me to my last question. There have been, I've, I've heard a lot of concerns, particularly around, around, amongst our public safety, um, personnel and some of, some of our public works, uh, facilities personnel about the short-term disability insurance provider, I guess, that we use now. Uh, we used to use Aflac. We went to someone else. And, uh, can we, can we go back to that?
Aflac's coming back.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Alright, um, that concludes all my questions and I think that we're done. Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item. I think we're, there is no other item.
You did have the one, uh, speaker.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Are you still here? That speaker came after the comment.
Ms. Ms. Ivory Denson, are you still present?
Thank you, Ms. Denson. Thank you for your patience. The chair recognizes Councilman Sebastian.
So, um, so I'm getting a little bit of a stickler for the rules and I'm not saying we should, we should recognize and allow this senior to speak. But my concern is, every time we start to twist and change the rules of, of when, and who do we stop it with? Because at another time, someone may desire to change the rules without having the necessary vote or adjustment by council and then it's gonna become a, a fight. And, um, I'm just like, just let us stick to the rules. So, but with that said, I'm, I'm more than okay with this, but I'm just wanting us not to do that. It could get us in legal trouble. Thank you all.
So your point of order is not a point of order. It's okay. Go ahead, Ms. Denson. Hold on, you're gonna hit that button when it, when it changes colors?
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to express my concerns today. Um, I have been a resident of Fulton County since nineteen seventy-five, when I purchased my home. And, um, in those days, the demographics of the community was a heck of a lot different than what it is today. And when you went to a meeting, oftentimes it was standing room only because I've always been a participant. Um, forever. And it's disappointing to me to come here today. If I were to ask uh, county employees to stand and then just persons from the regular community like I am, I believe that the attendance here is probably at least seventy-five percent city employees. And if you want, and maybe you don't want it, but, but I'm, I'm concerned about the city as I was when they were, the effort to stand it up. I expressed concerns then and frankly, I still have concerns. Uh, but some of that may be a topic for another day, but, but I wish you, you would let us see how many people here who are not, uh, city employees. I'm not. My son's not. Is anybody else that's not a city employee? So, so my point is that it looks like y'all are having these meetings for yourself and rather than for the community. Because ten o'clock in the morning is a hell of a time to be having a meeting for people who work. And you and I both know that the city of South Fulton does not have the big technology, um, companies and all that the North kinda has. That's a little reality. We got, uh, warehouses. Now we got data centers that's bringing in pollution. Everybody should know about that. It's been all over the news, news you can trust. Because you know, we in a different era now. But any even, I am concerned about this. If you want, if the city, and I'm not sure you do want it. If the city wants residents' participation, you have got to schedule these. I'm almost eighty-two coming next month on twenty-fourth. You need to schedule it at a time when it's convenient. Because I don't know what y'all's individual salaries, but when you're sitting up here, you're getting paid for it. People taking work off, time off from their jobs may not, probably are not getting unless they take some personal time and all jobs, it, it, they don't have that, you know? But I wish you would consider their, consider that and schedule your meetings when it's, when you will have greater participation. Because how are you going to know what you, your residents or the people that you are representing, your various district and throughout the, the city, what they really want? I think it's grossly unfair. It wasn't always held ten o'clock in the morning. And then you got one tonight, and if I'm still alive, I pray and I'll be back to that one too. Because I am concerned. I'm con- I'm concerned even at my age and, and I got one foot in the grave and another banana peel. I know that. So that's a reality. But I still care about what happens to future generations. When my daughter got ready to move from Maryland down here, and I'm glad I did. I dissuaded her from getting, coming to this city. Because I asked and we were trying to stand it up. Tell me one city. All I asked for was for one. Oh, thank you.
Do that, that, that is your time if you just wanna finish this thought.
Oh, yeah, but, but what I wanna say is this, is that there are concerns that I have about, about what is going on, that we are, um, focusing on so- some things that are not, in my opinion, the primary purpose of a, of a s- city. Festivals are nice. I don't disagree with them. But there are other things that, that are more important than that. We need to get this city on a good, strong financial basis because our tax base is primary taxpayers. It's not like the North. And if, and all these things you're gonna want, you wanna, wanna have, and you don't have businesses supporting it, you're gonna be, um, making, um, making it difficult for the residents who are your primary source around this city. And I see where somebody else was brought in recently, uh, 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 a person by the name of Alexander, I guess the same person that I have seen on MSNBC. Uh, beg your pardon? Oh, really? Oh, okay. Well, I'm gonna say what I was gonna say anyways.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna ask you to please make this your, your, your last comment. We gotta wrap.
Uh, uh, I understand. And you, and you need to allow more time for residents to comment. Cause after all, you all serve at the pres- as the pleasure of the residents. And some of them need to come and see how we are cut off and not allowed to speak. But anyway, what I wanna say is this, that position, is that a new position? Did we need that position? Because I know Ms. Alexander is on various TV programs and, and other things. So my point is, uh, we need to make sure that we, um, need what we have a, a, aboard. And I understand that we pay more than anybody else, established cities, for products, for various jobs. This is a new city. And places up in the North are able to pay more for police, for this and that. We come, we, we are poaching other cities by bringing people in at high wages. And you are beginning to take too much from the residents. Please think about it, because people will be doing just like I'm doing. If I was buying a house now, I, I would, I wouldn't buy it in the city because it's, it's, it's getting to be too expensive. I persuaded my daughter, she bought a house in Fayetteville, which is farther from me. I hate that, but, I mean, that's the reality. Please think more financially. I, I understand that the city manager, one more thing and I'll be through. That the city manager is able to, now, everything you hear is not true. But I was told that the city manager has the authority to approve one hundred thousand dollars contract without the approval of the council. Now, the city manager hadn't been, now, now, if that's true or not, so if, if I am in error, correct me, please, cause I wanna be accurate. To me, that is ridiculous. I don't know whether it's, it's, it's one contract or if she has, if she has, uh, ten contracts that she would have the authority to, to, in one month to approve up to a million dollars? Because we don't, the taxpayer don't elect the city manager. We, we, we elect the city council people. And so we expect you all to making those kind of decision. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. And Mr. Sebastian, I appreciate you allowing me to, to speak.
I'm, 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 I'm just gonna make a few responses, then we're gonna close out this meeting.
Okay.
Um, many of us will be a- around for a few minutes. I will be here. Uh, I hope the city manager will be here. Mr. Alexander may be here for a minute or two. I, I do just want to correct a couple of things. Number one, property taxes are no longer our number one source of revenue. It's dropped to number three this year. So that's something that we're, we're working on diversifying our income sources. We do have a public hearing tonight at seven PM. We had this one in the daytime for our seniors who don't wanna be out driving at night. Thank you for coming. We hope to see you again. Um, and anyone who wants to see, uh, either of these hearings, if they can't make it today, you can watch them online at our YouTube channel at City of South Fulton. So they're available online. All of us are available by email. If you didn't get to make your public comments today, you can't make them tonight, you can email them. Mr. Clerk, make sure that we get all of the public comments, uh, from people who are not able to speak. Thank you so much. I'm going to, we're going to be around, but I just need to go ahead and adjourn, uh, this meeting so that many of our industrious employees can get back, uh, to work. So I'm gonna go ahead and take a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I'm in the queue, please. I won't take long.
I, I, I'm gonna entertain a motion for adjourn and, uh, to adjourn and then we can have discussion and we can.
Mr. Mayor, there's a queue. There's two.
Yes, and everyone that's in that queue has already spoken twice.
Understood, but we're, this is not about.
The chair recognizes, I, uh, I, the chair recognizes whoever wants to speak. I don't know why I'm sitting up here. Mayor Pro Tem Pritchett.
Um, so, uh, ma'am, the, the lady who just spoke, thank you so much for coming today and speaking. And I just wanted to make a point of clarification. So I understand that citizens have the, are making the assumption that we're make, setting up these meetings at times that are not convenient for people. So when it comes to these types of hearings, these are lea- we have legal requirements to have a certain number of these hearings within a certain time period. Sometimes the hearings will be scheduled in the daytime, at nighttime. There are people who can attend meetings like yourself during the day, daytime. And some that have told me that they cannot attend at nighttime because they can't drive or see at night or drive or that type of thing. So I, I really appreciate all your comments. And I don't know whose district you live in, but just know that all of us are always around or available to talk to you and go over whatever issues related to the budget or anything in your districts. But we're not trying to make it difficult for anybody to come to us, to, you know, come to these meetings. They're also online for that same purpose. So I know that a lot of you, like you said, you hear a lot of things and you can't believe everything you hear. I hope that you believe us because many of us up here have other jobs and have to take off from those jobs to be at this job. And the whole point is that these are legal requirements. You know, we're not trying, we're never trying to make anything more difficult for you. Many of us have town hall meetings and different things and send out newsletters to make sure that you have the right information. So I just wanted to make sure that you know that. And when you spoke about the taxpayer dollars being the main source of our income, it's not. Um, in the presentation that was made, property taxes is fifteen point twenty-two percent of this budget. Fifteen point twenty-two percent. That's not even a quarter. And then if you add on the avalorum taxes, which is point eight-two, it's less than sixteen percent. Not saying that the citizens' contribution don't matter, but honestly, from everything that you've heard today, the city manager has done a phenomenal, phenomenal and great job at managing our city funds. And we're not in any deficits. We're are, we are in really good financial shape. So to the people who are saying all those things, take that back to them. Just let them know, we're really doing good. And, and they've reported that to you today. But we'll be glad to answer any questions after we adjourn. But thank you and everybody else that came out for this presentation today. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Let's just take this by show of hands. Thank you, everyone. See you back here in four hours.